There we go. All right, we're back from break. Next on our agenda is the special presentation recognizing the outgoing board and commission members. I have eight different plaques to give out, and what I understand is there's four people that are not available to receive their plaque, but we'll read their names anyways. Lynn Asman, and she was on the Arts and Festivals Committee. Kelly Muller, she was also on the Arts and Festivals Committee. Merrill Charles, who was on the Parks and Recreation Board, and then Sarah Marie Borner, who was on the Library Board. The ones that we think are going to be here are Jennifer Keen, who is the Chair of the Arts and Festivals Committee. Could I come on up? How are you? Thank you for your service. Do you want to say anything? You're good. You're done with the microphone. I understand. Next is Eric Clark, Planning Commission. See here? Nope. Claudia Elsmore, who is on the Landmark Preservation Board. Didn't see Claudia. And the last is Katie Lovelace, who is on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Not here. All right, we have one out of eight. That's good. Thank you for coming, Jennifer. I'll go back to the podium. Okay, so next on the agenda is the Council Committee Reports and the City Manager Report. Is there any Council Committee Reports? Deputy Mayor?
I have one, but I have to open my computer. So if Rosemary's ready, she can go.
Councilmember McLaughlin, go ahead.
Thank you. So I did want to just report on the celebration of the opening of Main Street because it was such a special day for all of us. And Mayor, you did a great job in your presentation. We also really need to recognize the police and the firemen who came and had many things happening for the young people to be able to sit in their -- touch the fire truck and sit in the police cars. It was just really, really well done. And I guess I should also say that the merchants of Main Street really showed up and opened their doors and welcomed people. So it was an amazing day, and I want to thank Tori and Barbara and Catherine as well for your work in making sure that people knew about it and that people had a great time. So I wanted to just recognize that and thank you all. And the red ribbon is now in the hands of Tori because, as a memorial, celebration of the day. So for historic purposes.
Awesome. Thank you. Next is Deputy Mayor.
I just have one report. The first meeting of the Sound Transit 405 Bus Rapid Transit Elected Leadership Group ended after that phrase because it's so long. No, just joking. So basically, this was our first meeting, I think, of four. Sound Transit kind of gave a brief overview of the 405 bus rapid transit project and the timelines and whatnot. My takeaways were that Sound Transit said to everyone that they're looking to locate a bus storage and maintenance facility in Canyon Park, and to which my response was, "Well, I hope you're planning on a direct access ramp because the traffic is really congested up there." And it's currently lacking from the plan, at least as I knew it. I later learned, I'm talking to WashDOT, that the legislature had put in $15 million towards Phases 1A and 1B. And 1B does include a direct access ramp. I had previously thought it was for right-of-way, and apparently it's not. It's for 1B. So 1B would include a direct access ramp and express toll lanes in the northbound direction of the 522 interchange. So that's all I have to report from that meeting.
Councilmember Olson?
Just a quick little report on the Snohomish Health District. So we are -- the health district is providing syringe pickup cleanup kits at the police department. So it has a syringe sharp container, tongs, gloves. So if people wish to go over to the police department, pick them up, clean up parks or wherever that they encounter syringes, they are available over there.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilmember Zorn, are you good over there? Do you have a committee reporter? Nope? Okay. All right, moving on. Oh, wait. City Manager, did you have a report? Nope. Okay. Moving on to the visitor comment. And just so everybody that's here is aware, we do have a public hearing later. And so if you want to -- you can speak now if you'd like, or you can wait till the public hearing to speak about the Housing Strategy Update and Work Program. So for visitor comment, I always read this. Not that. That would be bad. Each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion either directly or through a member of the council without the permission of the mayor. And I have no sign-up sheets. Does anybody want to provide a public comment tonight? Go ahead and come up to the podium, give your name for the record.
Sorry. Pat Pierce, do you need my address? I wasn't paying attention. I'm here to talk about the housing strategy, particularly the Strategy Work Program. But in starting with a housing strategy, it's caused a bit of confusion, the way it's presented. It's kind of morphing into the plan, but it's sitting on hold or something. It's not really clear about how this is being implemented. Are we going to have a strategy that is part of going forward? Because when you read the Agenda Bill, it's a little muddy. And normally, there'd be a resolution or an ordinance attached, and that's not there. So that caused some confusion with some people that called me up saying, "What on earth is going on?" kind of attitude. So I just wanted to pass that on. But my particular concern has to do with the Housing Strategy Work Program. And it seems to all, except for the ADU, focused on the downtown area. And it seems to me, if we do have a functioning plan for affordable housing, a housing strategy plan, we would be looking citywide. We wouldn't be focused down here at the navel of the universe. And those of us that live here are kind of what you might call PTSD kind of -- we're tired. We've had it. You know, we've been living with upheaval. It's hard to get around. You don't know if you can walk away. You know, you don't know if you can drive down. That fatigue has kind of taken over. And so the other problem is when talking about number one and number two, those have been issues that those neighborhoods worked on very hard, particularly during the downtown plan, and then subsequently when other issues have come up. And there were some changes made at the end when the downtown plan was being talked about. Oops. And changes were made by council to reflect what the neighborhoods were saying. And then there was another plan over here on 185th where we reached a compromise so the density and heights would go on the 185th side of the alley, and then the neighborhoods wouldn't be affected. So if you would please just take those off and look citywide and not kind of disrupt what's already been done and disrupt promises made. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. I saw another hand. Come up and just your name. We don't need your address.
My name's Mike Robinson, and I'm here to support what Pat was talking about. I don't know too much about the specifics of the latest threats that I call it to the neighborhood. Historically, I've been here over four decades and been through a lot of changes, and Pat alluded to some of the deals that were sort of made along the way. And in the mid-'80s is when the neighborhood woke up, that things were happening around, and there wasn't anybody that was real tied into it until we had a pocket of high density and we had single-family where we bought our home at the corner of 186 and 101st nearby, and it was very residential. Across the street, it was high density anyway. All this led to kind of a showdown in the mid-'80s because the developers wanted to do something, the residents wanted to do something, and there was this mixed mash of zoning. So in a sense of several months and many meetings and much planning commission and compromise and things, the area that we lived in went from single-family to low-density. The low-density areas moved into the medium, and the high-density, the deal was, and you can see it happening up there now, was that you could put a good-sized building there, but you needed to have enough property to be able to provide from overcrowding everybody around, and it would come together in a pattern. And my gosh, if you guys know the neighborhood at all, you know what I'm talking about. It's happened up there since this time. The people that were there and chose to stay have continued to stay. Some have rebuilt with new homes because the stuff that's come in is doing exactly what the plan hoped it would do then. It would incorporate the new to address the rundown aspects of the neighborhood and yet invite development that fit. And now, we have both. We have some high-scale housing in our neighborhood, and we have some affordable housing in our neighborhood, which is very timely in what we're talking about. As far as any more crowding into that area, what we've got now, might as well just go ahead and get it over with or draw the line now and do what we need to do in the areas where there isn't all of the threat to a pretty good established part of Old Bothell. Something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to provide public comment? Seeing none, we'll go into the next item, which is the Consent Agenda. Nothing's been pulled. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead and place your vote. We're, like I said in the beginning, we move the whole business after we do the public hearing. So we're now on to AB 18-070, which is the Housing Strategy Update and Work Program. I'm officially opening the public hearing. We have First to Staff presentation from Senior Planner David Boyd.
So Mr. Boyd is getting the presentation out. If I could just make a few remarks, Mayor, and members of the council, just want to set the stage for what the purpose is of tonight's public hearing and what we're asking from the council this evening. So we have a public hearing, and we are asking for council action after the public hearing on two items. Mr. Boyd will walk you through that. This is really a recap, and Dave, if you could go to the -- there we go to the second slide. This is really a recap of the Housing Strategy Update. You received a briefing back on March 13th. So we're going to do a quick recap of that, highlight the edits that have been made so far, just based on the feedback that we've received to date, review a proposed work program to implement the strategy. And that is really based on the Tier One recommendations from the Planning Commission and the feedback that we received from the City Council at the March 13th meeting. So what we have done with that work program has really gone into more detail. We're coming to you with that so that you can give us some direction as to which of those you would like us to work on. So this is really just taking the implementation strategy a step further before we spend time doing some additional work on potential implementation strategies that the council may or may not want to continue with. So after the public testimony, we're really asking for the council action. There are three possibilities. We're asking for action on the strategy itself, as well as the work program in two separate items. So the council could approve the strategy and the work program as recommended in the packet by staff. You could modify those prior to your approval this evening, or you could give us some direction as to some things that you would like some more information on or some reworking. But that's what we're asking for from the council this evening. So Mr. Boyd will walk you through the report and answer any questions. We also have Arthur Sullivan and Mike Stanger from Arch here to help us this evening and answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also have Planning Commission Chair David Vleet, who's here and available to answer questions if needed. So just to give a quick recap of where we are in this process, last -- on March 13th, we presented the planning recommendation on the housing strategy. Tonight, we're moving one step further. We've taken that strategy and those top-tier, the top-tier strategies, together with your feedback, as Mike said, to do a more detailed work program. So that work program did not go through Planning Commission review. That's something that we've distilled from what they did and what you voiced in your concerns and comments on March 13th. The work program includes items that would go back to Planning Commission for that more detailed review before it comes back to council for a recommendation. So if council moves forward with the work program as recommended. So again, we got here through a series of focus groups, public hearings, panel discussion of housing experts that all went into Planning Commission's nine-month-plus consideration of this important topic. That resulted in their recommended Housing Strategy Update, which went to council at the study session on March 13th. And then tonight, we're coming back with this more detailed work program for the next five years. So in the blue here are the items that were in the presentation on the 13th. Tonight's packet includes some minor updates to the Planning Commission recommendation and a more detailed work program for the next five years. The updates to the Planning Commission recommendation, like I said, are quite minor. In Appendix B, there were a few dates in there that have been updated just since Planning Commission started the work on that. There have been some progress on some of these items, including the downtown development figures and the adoption of the campus master plan and a clustering PUD, which were both identified as in progress and have now been adopted. It also includes updates to Appendix G, the Housing Strategy Matrix, to reflect council's removal of the South Riverside rezon in the 2018 docket. And that's -- those are on pages 108 and 109 of your packet. The feedback we got on March 13th, we heard strong support from council for the city doing more to address affordable housing. We heard strong support for transit-oriented development. I think a majority of council included that in their comments. And transit-oriented development probably means a lot of things to a lot of people, but it really means in the basic core is directing housing to areas with transit service like downtown and making improvements to walkability and livability in transit and employment hubs like Canyon Park. So that's where we are focusing much of our effort initially, through the proposed downtown code amendments and through the ongoing work in Canyon Park to develop a new subarea plan in Canyon Park. We also heard support for partnering with other institutions, including faith communities, and for encouraging accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. We also -- we heard questions about Bothell's demographics and housing needs. Those are -- were included in -- and are included in Appendix C of the Housing Strategy, and that starts on page 95 of your packet. And I've included that first page here, which includes a couple of interesting pieces of the demographic pie, including the fact that half of all Bothell jobs pay less than $50,000 a year. So that demonstrates that there is certainly a need for housing for that sector of the population. As you'll see in the bar charts in the lower left here, also that Bothell does have a lower percentage of the lowest income level and a higher percentage of the middle income and above, but we still have a sizable portion, over 50%, that do earn less than $50,000 a year. And that includes people like teachers and medical assistants, retail clerks, dental assistants, customer service representatives. So those are people that the Planning Commission recognized needed to be addressed. A gap, this chart illustrates one of the gaps that we have in our housing. Countywide, there's 12% of the population is in that lowest income bracket, where 30% of the area meeting income. Bothell provides housing suitable for just 2% of that, of our total housing supply. So we do have a sizable gap there. King Countywide, they're a little closer. They've got twice as much as Bothell, but still a substantial gap. So that's just one part of the need equation. This is a slide from the study session that has a number of other aspects of the need equation. I'm not going to go into all of this, but it does touch on the demographics of Bothell. It shows that there's a large number of the lowest and low-income homeowners and renters are severely cost-burdened, that they need to spend more than half of their income on housing. It shows that there's a sizable population in Bothell. 85% of the folks that work in Bothell commute from elsewhere, and some percent of that, that's just by choice or other circumstances, but a certain percent of that is that they're just not finding affordable or suitable housing in Bothell. And then, yes, we do have a homeless population. North Shore School District reported that in 2015, 2016, they had 203 homeless kids. That was a bit of an eye-opener in our discussions with Planning Commission. And there are more entering that homeless system every year. Back to cost-burden households in Bothell, only 10% of the low or very low-income rentals have housing that they can afford. 60% and/or more are severely cost-burdened. That's shown in the first two columns of the chart here. Of the moderate-income renters, almost twice as many are likely to be cost-burdened than the middle-income earners in the renters in the fourth column here. This also, not on the chart, but the analysis shows that both moderate and higher-income seniors in Bothell are -- tend to be severely cost-burdened, and that a number of -- about a third of moderate or lower-income homeowners are severely cost-burdened. And this is probably no surprise to anyone, but the affordable -- the rents are going up quickly, and for the first time in 2018, this goes through 2017, but in 2018, average rent exceed the affordability level for moderate-income housing, or moderate-income households. Those are earning 80% of median income. And on the homeownership side, again, the costs are outpacing the income levels, as shown in this chart, showing both single-family and condo prices compared to the median, what's affordable at a median income. So that sort of concludes a brief recap of some of Bothell's housing needs. Next, the real meat of tonight's discussion is on the Housing Strategy Work Program. And as I said, this was derived from those Tier One strategies in the Planning Commission's recommendation and addresses the feedback we got from council on the need to address affordable housing and to focus on TODs as to particular areas. It's a five-year plan, but the focus really is on the 2018 tasks, which are highlighted. And most of these items will require further analysis, and any plan and code amendments that are included in this work program will go to Planning Commission and come back to council for action. So all we're asking for tonight is for initiation of those new items that weren't included in the 2018 docket. It also includes items from other departments' work programs, things that they will be doing anyway, but that do help reinforce housing in the city of Bothell. We've highlighted in the staff report three potential code amendments that were not included in the docket. And then we've also given some additional analysis to one potential downtown rezon that was in the docket, but that could include an affordable housing requirement. So those three, those are removing some or all of the general downtown corridor three-story overlay, along with an affordable housing requirement, removing some or all of the remaining downtown transition district density limit with an affordability requirement, and one that's not downtown-focused, potential amendments to allow carriage houses and to remove other impediments to accessory dwelling units that have arisen, especially carriage houses, units over garages, is one that has brought this one to the forefront. And then there is additional, like I said, additional detail and analysis of the GC to SR 522 rezon along the west side of 522, south of Ormrech. So the general downtown corridor three-story overlay would revert to the four-story and 45-foot height limit that was originally proposed and studied in the Planned Action EIS. All of these potential code amendments are what we consider the low-hanging fruit, the potential for creating some affordable housing within the downtown subarea and within the what was studied in the EIS that wouldn't require going back for a supplemental EIS. So the EIS did study this entire area as four stories and 45 feet, and by lifting that height limit, we would create the nexus for an affordable housing requirement. It's also reflecting that the campus recently, the campus master plan that was recently approved, allows 65-foot heights on their Beardsley frontage where Husky Village is. So this would more closely reflect those heights. Downtown transition density limit is one that Planning Commission did recommend removing entirely. Council chose to selectively remove that. So the remaining areas are the ones that are shown with the white crosshatching along Lower Maywood and West Hill. And again, there would still, as in the general downtown corridor, there would still be special setback in height limits that would protect the adjacent single-family areas, and the density would be limited by height setbacks and parking. This would, again, provide an nexus for affordable housing requirements. The other item that needs to be initiated and would be initiated if you accept the work program are potential amendments to remove impediments to accessory dwelling units, including carriage house units. And the illustration here shows a garage on an alley in the Lower Maywood area, which outside the downtown subarea but nearby, that where the proponent proposes to add a level onto an existing garage for an accessory unit, but the current regulations prevent that. They allow garages in rear yards but not accessory units. Also, the height limit does provide some real challenges for getting a second, a two-level structure in. And this is all, when we've talked about accessory units, we often show carriage house units as an attractive way to do them, but our code currently makes it very difficult. And then initiated in the 2018 planning docket is the rezon from General Commercial to SR 522, south of Ormrech Street, the green area on the map here. Property owners in this area have submitted comments that were presented to council during the docketting process, that redevelopment option the docketing process, that redevelopment options were limited by the GC zoning. And again, this would allow housing in this area and provide that nexus for affordable housing requirements. Beyond those, those items, there are opportunities that are identified in the work program for studying the potential for affordable housing provisions on the sale of the remaining downtown parcels that are shown in yellow here. And then outside of downtown, the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center provides opportunities for, for transit-oriented development. And that's illustrated here, the areas in the pink outline are areas where we've, that we've identified through the visioning process in Canyon Park as having the best potential for mixed-use development and adding some housing density, housing within the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center. And those will be studied further as we move beyond the visioning phase and into actual studying code amendments and working with the stakeholders, including the Owners Association, to figure out how to, how they can lift their covenants restricting housing in a way that will provide the, the result that, that we would like to see there. So with that, I open it up for questions from staff, then move on to public testimony, council deliberations, and motions and votes to approve separately the housing strategy, strategy update and the work program, including the initiation of the new code amendments. Thank you.
Did you want to have Arthur talk first? Or did you want, you're just here for backup, you're the bench? All right, good to see you. Questions for staff? Oh, wait, we, do you guys want to take public comment first? Usually we do that. I have, is there a sign-up sheet for the public hearing? Nobody's on it? Okay. Would anybody like to provide public comment during the public hearing? Go ahead, come up and give your name for the record. Same rules apply as the public comment period.
Hi, my name's Eric McIntyre, and the plans you're looking at for the carriage house are actually my plans. Me and my wife live right up the street. We have a historic home. And we wanted to add a small ADU to the rear of our property for an apartment for our son, who currently just finished two years of Cascadia. He's starting UW next month, or next year. We've been, all of us, our whole family's been heavily involved in the, the city of Bothell. My wife was on the preservation board. I've been coaching for the minor leagues and the football league, the junior leagues for the last seven years. So we're very invested in the city of Bothell. My son, two of my sons work down at the, at the ranch. And my son that's currently going, that's going to be going to UW, he looked around for someplace to stay around here, and there's no place that somebody who works at the ranch and goes full-time to college can really afford. The Husky, the apartments over there by the college campus are about $1,200 a month. Across the street from our house, there's a fourplex that is 329 square feet each fourplex, that's $800. So we asked to build this ADU and everything we've tried, we've been, there's been a roadblock because of the current rules and regulations in place. And really, the only recourse we have now is, because where our garage is built, we could tear it down and move it back six feet. Or we can hope that you guys would look at some of the regulations and kind of identify some changes that can be made so we can provide affordable housing for our children while they're in college. That's what this is about. It's, we just want to, you know, have some of our children have some independence on their own while not being buried in debt, so they can still live in Bothell. And so I hope you really look at all the regulations that are really hindering development of, of ADUs in this area and, and, you know, help, help the homeowner, the homeowners in this area be able to provide, you know, some, some living quarters for, you know, other people that may need help. That's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to provide public comment? Seeing none, we'll move into council questions of staff. You guys are speechless. That's awesome. All right, is there a motion to approve? Okay, there, there we go, deputy mayor.
I was trying not to be first again. Where do I start? So in regards to page 77, the, the code amendment recommendations are possible changes, potential, that's the word I'm looking for. I was curious, what does it mean when it says in the second paragraph under item one? It says, "Heights adjacent to residential are limited to three stories and 35 feet." So we would be approving four stories, so how does that play into three stories and 35 feet? Is the 35 feet a setback or is it a step back?
It basically amounts to an upper-level setback. So at the back property line, the property line adjacent to a single-family neighborhood, the height would be 35 feet. And that would have to continue for 65 feet before the, the project go, go up to four stories.
So it would be 68, so 65 feet from the front of the building or from the face, the face that's next to a residential?
Correct.
Building? My next question is, in regards to the, the carriage house, do, are there regulations in play, or would there be regulations in place if we approved this so that it wasn't able to? I guess I'm just a little concerned about, I like the idea, the concept, but just trying to play devil's advocate, would there be any concern about blocking neighbors' views and that sort of thing? Or are there allowances for that sort of thing too?
Well, the current height limit is 20 feet or the height of the primary structure, whichever is less. That is pretty restrictive when it comes to adding a second level, either on top of a garage or just a two-story ADU. And other jurisdictions use 28 feet, 25 feet, that, that would make that easier. So, so we would be looking to, to modify that sort of the minimum possible, because the idea with these ADUs is they are, their size is limited, they're, they can only be a maximum of 800 square feet. This one is proposed, it would be quite a bit less than that. And so they are supposed to fit into the, the neighborhood, and they do require that one of the residences be owner-occupied. So we don't, you know, we haven't worked through all those details. This would go back to Planning Commission, and I think they did a very thoughtful job and, and were fairly conservative in their approach last time around. We're finding that some of those restrictions are getting in the way of some projects that we think would, would be worth, that deserve to be approved.
Okay. In regards to the housing strategy plan, on page 85, it talks about affordable housing with capacity increases. And I guess my question is, so everybody has in their packet this, this thing, introduction to affordable housing. It came from a sit-down that I had with a gentleman who was on actually the, this task force on Bellevue. And so he sat down with me and I wanted to share with you what I learned because I thought it was a nice add-on to what we've already discussed. And, and in that, we had a discussion about inclusionary zoning. And so as he explained it to me, and I want to make sure that we're on the same page, the inclusionary zoning is when you mandate a percentage of affordable housing or, and/or if, if it's not included, the developer has to pay into a fund. And so I guess what I was wondering is, we didn't use those words in this plan, but is that what we're thinking we'll be doing? Because according to this gentleman, Hal, from Spectrum, and, and I took an affordable housing tour, and, and pretty much every source that I've talked to says that if you want affordable housing, you have to mandate it. And so I'm just curious how, how that plays in with what we're suggesting here. Does that make sense, my question?
I'll, I'll take a start, and I think Arthur can elaborate on that. So inclusionary zoning includes a range of different strategies, including mandatory requirements as well as incentives. What we're, and so we're starting down the path of, of inclusionary zoning with the affordable housing requirements when we do increase capacity. But there are, there are a number of other strategies that we could use, and, and I'll defer to, to Arthur to elaborate on that. But one of the first, one thing we haven't focused on here tonight is, Planning Commission already has made recommendations for the foundational code amendments to allow us to apply these affordable housing requirements when we increase capacity. And that's one of the first things we'll be bringing back to council. It doesn't have to go back to Planning Commission, they've already done it. And, and then that can be expanded to include other inclusionary housing policies.
I guess I was trying to understand how that would apply in particular to these code amendment potentials, and that makes sense.
So we've worked with about eight cities in East King County on this program. We're, at this point, we're not saying if it's going to be mandatory or voluntary. I'm not necessarily disagreeing with the comment you're making. But what we want to first start with is basic principles. Now, when you look at any individual rezon, be it a site or a neighborhood, that will be one of the things talked about first by the commission and then by you. And so in many of the cities we've worked with, they've landed in a spot where it is a mandatory provision. There have been some cases where the cities have made it technically voluntary, but they started with a really low base FA, you know, really low capacity, and if you wanted to go higher, then you, then you had to provide the affordable. So there's a couple different ways it can be done. And it'll be your call and the commission's call, and the commission, and then your call ultimately, if you want it to be a straight mandatory approach or an approach that links it to some additional capacity. We even have one city who did both in one neighborhood. They have a mandatory component, and then if you go above a baseline, then you add a voluntary component on top of that. So we like to go into those things so that you can look at each neighborhood, we know there's two or three approaches, look at those two or three approaches and see what feels best in that circumstance. But in many times, it does land at a mandatory approach.
Okay.
And if I could just elaborate a little bit on what Arthur has talked about. So when we talk about the mandatory, and we've talked about an increase in the capacity, in order for us to require a, a certain amount of affordable housing, we have to provide some additional capacity for the developer. We can't just outright require it. There has to be a quid pro quo, if you will. So there has to be a benefit to them, that comes through that increased capacity. So that's an important part to consider here. That often is, is the case with an incentive program as well. But as you stated, typically, at least in the research that we had done before, we're more likely to get more units out of a mandatory program than an incentive program. The other piece I want to add to this, and this is, we'll be working with, with Arthur if you approve the work program tonight and these particular aspects of it, but we'll be working with Arthur and his staff at Arch to determine just how much of an increase would be necessary in order to make that mandatory provision work. And that varies by market, so we're not sure exactly how much of an increase we'd be talking about at this point. That's a lot of the additional analysis that we would have to do.
Okay.
So to illustrate that point, some cities have wanted to get the affordability level at a lower level, like a 50, or 60 or 70% of median. You need to generally give a bigger bonus, you know, there's usually some type of ratio when you're doing that math. And some cities have actually combined two different strategies together. They've taken a density increase with a multifamily tax exemption and combined those together to get greater affordability. So that's what I mean by, we know the various tools that can be used and we'll explore, we'll help you explore those in each individual case, and you can figure out what makes sense within what we think are the legal bounds that you have.
Yes, and that's why I asked the question, because on the, the packet, the last page, it compares just using one, you don't have the benefit of the packet.
I've seen it, yeah.
But it, it compares getting 15 if you're just using inclusionary zoning and then as much as 58 if you have multiple incentives and whatnot. So that was important to me. Okay. I have, sorry, I have a bunch of questions. On, under the timely strategies, this just, I, I wasn't understanding why some are highlighted in blue. I was trying to figure out, what does that mean? Are those the ones that are most timely? I just was not clear.
No, that's, that was just a graphic tool to, to distinguish the different strategies. So it alternates between.
So it's just for readability?
Yeah. And it was designed, the idea there, Planning Commission thought it would be useful to have a, like a one-page or a double-sided handout that we could give folks that would tell, tell them what, what those timely, top-tier strategies were. And so that, that's a first stab at that. We can develop that as we, if that's a, if a handout like that is something that we pursue.
Okay. No problem. I just, I'd wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something. A general comment on the strategy matrix is that we, there aren't a lot that address low or very low income. And so it's just, obviously, those are the most needy in terms of category, and when we don't really have a lot to address that. So you don't have to respond right now, it's just a general comment.
I could, one thing that might help, the inclusionary zoning techniques where we're getting developers to build the affordable units, and Arthur, please correct me if I'm wrong, but they're generally more targeted at the moderate income levels, 50% to 80%. To get at the 50% and lower, those generally require some sort of public involvement. Either using those surplus properties might be one way, collecting fees in lieu of providing, and then working with low, affordable housing developers to provide that. Those are some techniques that will get you to those lower levels. Those are, those are things that we will be looking at further as we develop this.
So I guess a process question would be, after tonight, whatever we approve or don't approve, it all, any upzones aren't going to actually happen until the end of the year because they're code amendments. So we have time to get our affordable housing strategies in place. In other words, the affordable housing, well, some, not all. Some of those affordable housing strategies will be at the same time as the upzones.
Well, I guess what we're, I guess the way we're looking at is, we're approving the strategy tonight. We hope we're approving the strategy tonight. And then within that work program, we will be developing those strategies as we work on. And, and it's not just upzones, it's also code amendments that, that might increase the capacity, can provide that nexus or that quid pro quo to, to require or incentivize affordable units.
Okay.
So, so it is a work in progress, but this is setting the stage for the next five years, and particularly for the next year. We anticipate that we would come back to you each year with that coming year's more detailed work program.
The deputy mayor raises a good point. So in terms of the timing, though, we would have to put the mandatory requirement in with or ahead of an upzone or any increase in density. We can't do it retroactively.
Okay, thank you. So those are my questions. I do have comments, should I wait? Okay.
All right, any other questions of staff? Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. So there's three areas I'm really concerned about. And the first And the first one would be the ADU regulations. And I know we had a member from the audience speak about the difficulty they had in trying to build an ADU for their son. One of my philosophies is, is that in order for our children sometime to stay at home or in Bothell, is that we need to be able to build a cottage. So could you, not at this point in time, but give me some of the input you've received on the difficulties of building ADUs? Because I know you can do the above the garage one, I saw that, but a separate dwelling is what I'm looking at.
Sure, we can provide that.
Okay. And then my next one would be, what steps, or I want to say, what do we do to retain our existing mobile and manufactured home parks? These are some places where our seniors and our low-income families can live. And I noticed other cities do make overlay zones so that they can protect them. Do we have anything like that?
Yes, Bothell was one of the first jurisdictions in Washington State that protected mobile home parks with an overlay zone. So those are still in place. We're not seeing an urgent need, so it's not in this year's strategy to reexamine that. But it is within the overall strategy. We recognize that there have been some concerns raised, that some of those parks are aging. In fact, they're all aging, and there may be a need to rethink some of those strategies, find other ways to house those people going down the road. But it hasn't come up as an urgent need that needs to be addressed this year.
Thank you. And then my last one would be my concern for people who are aging in place. And I see that there is certainly some options for them, promote housing options and programs and services that enable seniors to continue living in their homes. So I'm just very much interested in what options are out there for them.
We've identified, working with nonprofits, and perhaps providing some support to nonprofit groups that do have programs to support seniors in aging in place. I think some of the housing preservation strategies would also potentially do that, giving seniors some resources for keeping their homes up. They may be able to continue living in their home, but might not be capable of maintaining it. So those are some of the ones that come to my top.
Right, and are there any exceptions, like for property tax, or exclusions for seniors, or utilities, anything that could be helpful for those kind of costs?
I know the county assessor's office has exceptions, senior exemptions, at certain income levels.
Yeah, I know, it's pretty low.
Yeah.
It's very low, I looked.
I don't know, are there others, Arthur, that?
One, I know one of the things that the Housing Task Force, the King County Regional Housing Task Force, is looking at is working with the county to lower, or, I'm sorry, to raise that level of exemption for seniors, so they have a higher income level, they would still qualify. Because right now, it is very low, that's correct. The other, the other thing, maybe Arthur's going to talk about this, is ADUs, and how those can help seniors in particular stay in their homes.
So I'm going to put the unabashed plug-in for Arch at this point. ADUs is, which was just mentioned. Aging in place, we're going through the same conversation with about seven other cities. A lot of people in your position care a lot about this topic lately. And there are several areas in which we are seeing pretty much universal concern. Aging in place and ADUs are two examples of those. One of the things that can potentially happen through this unique partnership the city council created a number of years ago, is we are this year anticipating, starting to look at ADUs from a much more comprehensive point of view. So it's not just about the residence thing, saying, I can't build my unit on this thing. But for the senior, okay, let's say that idea is out there. Where do they get the money to do that addition above the garage? Where is the financing that they might be able to afford on a fixed income if they're retired in order to do that work? So we will look at not just, you know, we'll get all the cities together potentially to look into some ideas and where we might be able to, we've tried this about 10 years ago, to find a financing structure that might help households who are lower income to be able to do an ADU so they can stay in their home. And then probably this year, necessarily, but like next year, the aging in place, you know, you've heard about property taxes, you've heard about that, is we can get multiple cities together to brainstorm together, and maybe develop, either to help you on the regulatory side, but maybe work together to come up with some other types of tools that might be able to be applied across the region in order to address some of these issues like aging in place. So maybe there's a service program, or a home share program, things along those ideas that might be able to be developed, that might be hard to do on a single-city level, but by cities getting together might be able to do.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else have questions? We can move into comments if that, we could do a motion, then have comments, or you guys want to have comments and then a motion? Oh, they want comments and then a motion, all right. Let's do a round of comments. Who would like to go first? Councilmembers, or?
Okay, so Dave, you answered some of my questions. I had a, so forgive me if I am more disjointed than I usually am. One comment that I, just as an aside, my four sons put in jointly 15 years at, working at Ranch Drive-In, working and paying their way through school at Cascadia and Uofb Bothell, so I know exactly what you're talking about there. My concern is about the amended attachments that we have here. They aren't minor. I'm coming from a perspective of living here in downtown. And I also live through the Siberia design process. And I will tell you that people who live here, most people who live here live through that, and they are still quite raw from a lot of the changes that happened. One thing when I was out doorbelling was, someone said to me, get transition zones back, and good luck with that. And I don't know if we'll ever have effective transition zones. If you live on the cusp of where uses are different, it doesn't feel like, much like a transition zone. And one piece of that, I'm just going to leap while we're on that, is density limits. And the part that, we live near an area where density limits were removed. And my comment, my question to that city council at the time was, can you explain to me the reason, the logic behind removing density limits? And they said, well, we don't want to look like the pines. And that logic still escapes me. So if we do move forward on removing density limits, I would love someone to explain that logic for me, because I still don't get it. So even though we don't have density limits where I live, I'm really concerned about removing density limits where they exist in other parts of transition zones of Bothell. That has to be treaded very softly and very carefully. When I was on Planning Commission, I'm going to go back to the First Amendment, we talked about offering an extra floor for people who agreed to do affordable housing. And my comment to them at the time was, downtown is maxed out. We are maxed out topographically, what's zoned for our little districts, our little sub-areas in the sub-area. We are maxed out. And so personally, and this was my comment during Planning Commission, is, I don't want to see an incentive where you get an extra floor put in. Now, in areas where we have not talked about updating the Siberia plan, like up in Canyon Park, where it's a broader valley floor, it's further away from residential homes, game on, let's do that. But in an area that's already maxed out, and people are wounded with the previous changes, I think there's other ways to encourage some affordable housing. It's going to be hard. But adding another story, another floor is not it. It would not have, I'm weighing in as I would not support that. But I don't speak for all of council. I am very intrigued by ADUs. I would love to, if Planning Commission has room in their schedule to talk about that, I would love to see that cleaned up and encouraged. Also, you know, density limits, removing density limits, you know, have that conversation, but please come with more information on why that makes sense when it's right up against single-family homes. Let's see. And then on the undeclared fourth topic of allowing residential to be put along that strip along 522, if that goes before Planning Commission, and it goes through the public process, and the neighbors who live up on that hill have an opportunity to weigh in, that makes a lot of sense to me as well, that it sits right there on the highway, buses can slide in and out. It just made a lot of sense to me, but it's not my judgment call. I would appreciate, because the work is so comprehensive, and so thorough, and so well-thought-out, that our approval of strategies is separated, and we're voting, and we vote on that separately from what we do with the amendments, and what we, where we decide to go with that. And I think the only other thing is to make sure that we have plenty of opportunity for the public to weigh in on this. And that's the sum total of my comments.
All right, any other comments? Deputy Mayor?
So I had forgotten to ask the question, but I guess I'll just make it a statement that I would be in favor of inclusionary housing and added density limits on city-owned surplus properties, when we go to sell those. I think that makes sense, those are on, those are basically TOD opportunities, and we have a little more say in what they will become. I appreciate the vast amount of work that went into the housing strategy. I think it's very well thought out. There's a lot there to unpack, so I'm not quite sure I get all of it. And I agree, in theory, with the strategy. I think the issues that I have are getting, you know, it's all the devil's in the detail. And I would hope that we, I think balance is really important. I think the downtown has really taken it in the chin. For a while now, we have pretty bad congestion. And so as we look to make the balance between congestion and affordable housing, I think there's some nuance to it. And we need to have careful consideration of the context in which we make these changes. I also, I guess going through, I would like these code amendment, potential code amendments to be voted on separately from everything else. I am currently not in favor of the, while in theory, I understand the idea of putting affordable housing in higher limits on Beardsley. I think that will happen eventually, but I think it's, there are single-family residents on that road that are ranches, and it just doesn't make sense to me to zone for four stories next to that. Number two, I agree, we need to have transition zones. The problem is, those areas that we're talking about removing density limits from, those are our affordable housing right now. And I don't think it, I don't think it makes sense to endanger those affordable housing units by packing it in with no transition. Number three, I'm in favor of the carriage house. I'd like to, you know, know the specifics, but I'm in, I am in favor of allowing the carriage house ADUs, that makes a lot of sense to me. And then the potential rezone of the commercial zone downtown to SR 522, I think, as Council Member Zorn's mentioned, with a public process, I could support this. It's on the transit route, it's not adjacent, at least on-level, with single-family residences. And so that, that makes a lot of sense to me, and I'd like to explore that. So those are my comments.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. I guess I'd start off by saying, we have a lot of work to do, both here at home and across the region. And I do appreciate the partnership with Arch and making sure that we're doing our part. It's very interesting to hear the comments about the other cities and what they're doing. So I appreciate being part of that process. When it comes to ADUs, I'm encouraged by the conversation around ADUs. I think there's a little more to understand about the process when we heard tonight about how long it takes, the different things you have to go through. What are the other alternatives? What are the other options? Is there homes that are built off-site, manufactured-type homes that are brought in? Is it the permitting process that's taking the time? Just understanding the process, I think, would be important. Carriage houses, I'm all for that. I'm all for finding alternatives so that we can look after our students, our younger generation, and our senior generations as well. But I'm baffled by the amount of work that's gone into this, and what we're going to have to do in the future. I'm just, I'm floored when it comes to affordable housing. We go to meetings all the time, and we hear about affordable housing, and what it's going to take to, what was the last statistic that I heard, that we're 200 and some odd thousand units behind where we need to be? What do we need locally here, within our community? How are we doing with our manufactured homes? We talk about, we have a protected overlay, that was one of the positive things I've had, heard about in the committee meetings here recently, was that Bothell's one of the only cities that has protected its manufactured homes. What does it look like in the future for those manufactured homes? If they're rundown, can we do stacked homes? I think there was a project in University Village, University District, that had an affordable housing project that was put together, was stacked, almost looked like containers. I'm not sure exactly what that project was, but there's a lot of work to be done. I'm glad we're looking at it now, and we're taking the steps to ensure that we have affordable housing here in Bothell. But I don't want to, I guess for me, as a council member, I want to make sure the public understands that this is not going to get solved overnight. We're going to have to do a lot of work to ensure that we can create affordable housing here. And developers are not going to stop building homes for profit until we do something that allows them to build homes that are affordable. They're going to continue to be for profit. Partnerships with nonprofits, faith-based groups, I think is awesome. But I've been in the construction industry for 27 years, and I'm just, I'm blown away with what's going on with the prices of housing in our area right now. And I just, you know, I agree with the deputy mayor, we need to find, you know, transmit-oriented development partnerships, possible sound transit, or metro, or whatever, but I don't know, but I think we're on the right track with what we're doing. But I'm optimistic that we're going to make a dent, and I'm hopeful that we will be able to take care of our seniors and our young students in perpetuity. So I'm just, I don't know what more I can say. I'm just, this is, this is one that just got me baffled a little bit. And Arthur, I think you know what I'm talking about, because it's a heavy lift, and you just, you have to take it piece by piece, and hopefully you can make the right dent in the problem. So, thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. So again, I think when we look at housing choices apply, and we say that we need smaller housing types in single-family zones, I also have housing types in single-family zones, I also have kind of looked at the fact that there's a large percentage of families that just have two people in the household. It's not, I don't know why, but that's kind of the statistic I've read about. So I would like you to explore regulatory changes to support cottages, townhomes, multiplexes, rooming, boarding houses and others. So that would be your B1 under regulatory flexibility and, or BA, sorry. Yeah, B1, A. And then on the B, smaller housing types in multifamily and mixed-use zones. So that talks about micro apartments near transit-oriented districts, and I'm really interested in that as well because our colleges and universities would really be very, it would be helpful for them to be able to do that. And I think finally, and this is kind of one of the sky-in-the-pie ones, so I think we have to explore how we're going to trade off. When you build the apartments and you have multifamily homes, if there is some way to say, if we could develop a van or some kind of a service, taking people from their neighborhoods to the transit areas, maybe they'd save on parking. And so that's kind of one of the things I want to look at in the future, is to say, how could we move people around the city better so that they don't have to have a car? It's walkable, it's livable, and there's some way for them to reach transit-oriented districts. Pie in the sky, maybe, but that's okay.
That's what we're here.
Throw it out there.
So I have just a couple of comments to add. I like what the council's going with their comments and things. But just a couple of things that I wanted to kind of put up in the forefront. And one of those is that we sold Regional Growth Centers as a region as the place that we were going to accommodate growth. And we did that with the mindset, a lot of, I mean, the majority of Bothell's are 9,600, are 8,400, you know, larger lots with a single-family house on it. And as a community, we saw coming down the tracks that we were going to need to accommodate a lot of people. And so we made a decision that we wanted to put people in downtown and we wanted to put them in Canyon Park. That became a Regional Growth Center, so that had to mean something even though that did not come to fruition, that there was housing put in there, but we're turning that corner now. But the, so I just kind of want to keep that in front of everybody, that that was by design the intention of, because otherwise what we'd need to do is put a whole lot of people into the single-family housing parts of the city. That also makes it more complicated for transportation, makes it more complicated for mass transit if you spread everybody around instead of trying to accommodate density in smaller sub areas. So I want to continue with that, and having the affordable housing in those areas makes sense to me. I think where people get kind of confused is that, well, can the city just come in and say, you know what, if you go to develop that the way it is right now, we're going to require you to do affordable housing. Well, we can't, just correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we legally can do that. I think we would have to do that, like we were talking about, you can't upzone it and then say some of it needs to be affordable housing. You need to have the affordable housing requirement in place before you do the upzone. Otherwise, the city becomes exposed to liability and we would lose. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that, that that's why we can't just unilaterally make decisions up here to say, hey, we're just going to make affordable housing happen. We actually need to do a thoughtful process of getting the requirements in place first and then start doing increased upzones. And I think that's where people struggle because the last go-around, we made a whole bunch of accommodations to have growth in the downtown, and now we're talking about more growth. And the more growth is the affordable housing piece. And so I think we're all kind of, I'm struggling with that because some of these buildings that are going up, yeah, I mean, I grew up here and it's just like, wow, that's a very big building. And we're not used to them yet. And we will. I guarantee you someday, you know, 20 years from now, it's not going to be unusual at all to see a five-story building around here. People are going to have to go somewhere. People want to live in this area. So we need to make places for them to live. The other thing, and I've talked to the mayors of the other cities about this, and I think I expressed this to Michael as well, I'm tired of talking about affordable housing. Like if we start now, it's a five-year plan. Like let's go, let's start doing something now. Because we, this is no dig on the city in general, but we haven't really done it. We don't have a lot of affordable housing. So why don't we turn that corner and certainly start turning now because it's going to take years. And recession is looming, you know? We maybe have three, four years tops before the economies start to go down. So anything we start now in a five-year process, well, we're going to have to go through a recession probably before we'll really see stock of affordable housing become available. So I'd like to move on this stuff. I understand there's concerns and there will be a public process for all this. This is just a strategy. And the other thing that I wanted to point out is that I was pulled aside, and this was a totally impromptu, we didn't ask for it, but the former mayor of Bellevue talked to me about this affordable housing strategy that Bellevue just created recently. And we stole their planner, who is now currently our planning director, that did this project. And so we were in excellent hands with somebody at the helm, I'm sorry, I'm giving you a little ego stroke here, but to do this for us and guide us through this. Bellevue just did this and now he's here. And so I don't see why not to pull the trigger and start moving forward with creating our own local strategy to accommodate affordable housing. So that's all I have to add. So I believe we are due for a motion. The staff have asked us to have two separate motions, one to motion to approve the housing strategy update, and the other is a motion to approve the housing strategy implementation schedule. Is that correct, Mr. Boyd? Are you getting up there? Okay.
That's right.
Do I have a motion? One at a time? Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to, sorry, I got a phone. I can't get my computer up, so, to make a motion to pass the housing strategy update.
Second. Oh, there you beat me to it. Moved by the deputy mayor, second by Councilmember Ragnow to approve the housing strategy update. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead, place your vote. Passed unanimously. Is there a motion to approve the housing strategy implementation schedule? Moved by Councilmember McAuliffe, second by Councilmember McNeil. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'd like to propose an amending motion to remove 1 and 2, code amendments 1 and 2. Second.
It's moved by the deputy mayor, second by Councilmembers Zornz to pass the, I'm doing a little ad hoc here, pass the housing strategy implementation schedule with items 1 and 2 removed. Is there any discussion on the motion? Maker of the motion, would you like to speak to your motion?
Well, I, we heard some comments from the community about the process that was long fought and difficult to find compromise. And I just don't think it's the right time to raise the height limit on Beardsley. And I think we need to respect transition zones in the downtown area because they're butting up against single-family one-story homes. And I think we need to respect our neighborhoods. That's part, that's also in the housing strategy, is respecting neighborhood vitality. So those are my reasons.
Any further discussion on the motion? Councilmember McAuliffe, would you want?
I guess I'm just concerned as to taking it off. This is certainly, and let me try and be clear here, by keeping it on, it would come back to us for a vote. Is that correct? It doesn't mean that we're going forward with this. So I cannot support taking it off because I think we have work to do on it. And then when it comes forward as to a vote, we'll have that work done and we'll have the community involved and we'll have time to proceed. But taking it off is something that concerns me.
Any further discussion on the motion or the many motion? Thank you. Councilmember Zornz?
I would just like to second what deputy mayor Dour said, is that there has been volumes and volumes of discussion on both items 1 and 2 historically here in Bothell. And I consider it a waste of staff time and Planning Commission time and our time to beat this dead horse when we have so many other issues that we have to deal with. So if we had not had this discussion recently and the ink was dry on recent changes, then I'd say, yeah, maybe let's talk about it. But we have spent volumes of time and discussion on this, and I'm ready to put it on hold and deal with more immediate concerns.
Any further discussion on the many motion? So I'm not going to support the many motion because I have full faith in the planning director to explore these items. I understand your guys' concern. I just think that we should keep everything on the table that the staff have recommended to fully investigate and understand, and so that's why I'm not going to support the motion. Any discussion? The amending motion fails with 4 in the negative, 3 in the affirmative. We're back to the underlying motion, which is to approve the implementation plan. Is there any discussion on the underlying motion? Or did we already do that? No, we didn't. Seeing none. You ready over there, C. Clerk? You good? Okay. Go ahead, place your vote. Passed unanimously. So that ends the public hearing. And now we are on to, I think this is where I moved AB 18-069 Quarterly Update. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation and thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Old Business AB 18-069 Quarterly Update on Progress Towards Council Goals. The city manager, you have a presentation?
I do. So this is the, actually the fifth quarter update for the 2017-2018 biennium, but the first quarter update for 2018. And the scorecard that is attached to the AB and your packet has been updated from our conversation that we had in January, where you refreshed and rebalanced and looked at your goals. You didn't change fundamentally the goals all that much. You incorporated some together, made some minor adjustments to some of the objectives, and we moved forward. And so that's reflected now in this scorecard for 2018. We removed some things that we accomplished in 2017, otherwise the scorecard gets too long and wordy. And so we're looking at accomplishments that we're doing and work that we're doing for 2018. So I have this in the agenda bill, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. So the affordable housing strategy, obviously something you just considered, is coming forward. So that's, we're making good progress on that. The citywide team-building training and organizational development, training, a staff training, needs assessment is being done by our new human resources director. We're very excited about that so we can better understand what our staff is looking for and where the needs are. We're initially focusing on supervisory training. We feel that there's a definite need for that in the organization, so I'm really happy that we have our new HR director on board leading us through that. Citywide technology, we've been doing some periodic updates, but we're implementing the utility billing portion of the new financial software package, and we're also initiated work on the human resources payroll software system, really critical for the efficiencies of the organization. Under community connections, a new consulting team is in place for the audit on the tourism program and Explore Bothell. You've approved those contracts just recently. We also have a public portal now through Laserfish. Again, this is about connecting to the community and giving them access to documents so they can more easily search and find things. It's all part of the transparency and having our community be a part of the work that we're doing and the decisions that you're making as a council. Community health for those in need, we've made some good progress with our navigator program. We're working with Councilwoman Dembowski on looking for additional funding and other sources of funding. This has just been a highly successful program, and so we're eager to find additional funding for that. Economic development, we're very pleased that the consent decree is in place for the Bothell Service Center, and the environmental work is beginning on Lot D, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. And even though the AB says, because it's for the first quarter, which ended in March, the Main Street Enhancement Project is complete. And as Councilmember McAuliffe said, we had a fabulous ribbon cutting on Saturday, and so we're just delighted that that project is finished, and we look forward to the businesses thriving on Main Street. Fiscal responsibility and stability, we've spent a lot of time working on the public safety levy and bond measure and bringing information to council to help you make a decision for June. And we've begun work on our 2019-2020 budget, and we had a workshop just last Friday to start talking about your goals for that budget as well. Parks and Recreation, staff is working on purchasing those last five acres, so that's still a heavy lift for the Parks and Rec Department. And that'll be coming to you before the end of the year, which is our deadline to purchase that. And we're looking at possible purchasing strategies for the Shelton View Forest. The public safety strategy, the Fire Department Strategic Plan was finalized. The Police Department personnel have participated in several events through the first quarter. They've been really active in our community. And the Safe Streets and Sidewalks, there was an annual progress report was done. We presented that before council, and there's also a quarterly report attached to this as well for the Safe Streets and Sidewalks. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if there's any areas. We use the green, yellow and red signals to show you where we're on track. If you had any questions or any changes that you'd like to make, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the city manager? Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. And on page seven and also page eight, you talk about the Community Resource Day. Are we currently doing a Community Resource Day?
No, that's on hold at the moment.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that right. Thank you. And then one other thing, and that is, you know, I really think it's important to do citywide team-building, training and for staff to really, you know, work together as a team. I still think that city council ought to have that same opportunity.
I just received a proposal today that I've shared with the mayor for him to review, and so I've been working on that. That's absolutely something that you've asked me to do, and I'm committed to providing that for you. So I received a proposal from a highly recommended facilitator, and so we're reviewing that, and absolutely I'm working on that. My pleasure.
Any other questions for the city manager or comments? I appreciate the update. I like these, I like the format. I hope everybody else does as well. It's just kind of a good snapshot of what our goals are and what you guys are doing to meet the goals that we've laid out, and I really appreciate the reports, quarterly reports.
That's terrific.
All right. We have our pictures at 8 o'clock, so we, do we have time for one more item? Update on downtown city-owned properties?
Is the photographer here?
Oh, there she is.
Oh, hi.
You're ready to go? Okay.
Maybe we should take a break.
Let's go to break. We're going to be in break for 20 minutes because we have to do a photo shot, a group photo of the council. So we'll be back here at 8:10, 8:12. Let's make it 8:12. No, let's make it 8:15. We'll be back at 8:15.